So, good evening, welcome. For those of you who may not know me, I'm Dave Harris, I'm the new town's CIO, and I will be your in-C for this evening's ceremony. To get us started, please welcome Jolene Felton as she performs her national anthem.
(Singing) Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love in all our sons command. With glowing hearts we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God keep our land, glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
So, before we start the swearing-in ceremony tonight, we would like to take this opportunity to recognize a few of our residents with the Canada 150 Faces of Claremontville recognition. I'd like to call upon Nancy Robbins to introduce tonight's recipients.
Mayor Russell, ladies and gentlemen. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to join you here this evening. As part of Claremontville's Canada 150 celebrations, the community launched the Faces of Claremontville initiative. Throughout 2017, our town will recognize people or organizations that have contributed significantly to helping shape our community. Tonight, it is my honor, on behalf of the Canada 150 Committee, to recognize five individuals with this recognition. I will read the nomination for each individual, and I'll ask Mayor Russell to join me in presenting the awards. Our first recipient is Bruce Strong. Bruce is a very familiar face in the town of Claremontville. He spent 38 years in the Claremontville Fire Department, 20 as chief. He was on Claremontville Town Council for 16 years, and spent four as deputy mayor. He was the director on the 1994 Winter Games Committee, and a member of the Planning Committee for the East Link Event Center. He volunteered for 15 years with the Claremontville Area Recreation Association, and spent seven years managing the stadium. Outside of the municipality, Bruce has served as 10 years as a GB Cross Memorial Hospital Board. He was chair of the Finance Committee. He has volunteered for 10 years as Eastern Newfoundland's advisor for Muscular Dystrophy Association of Canada. Bruce is one of the first 50 members to form the Claremontville Area Co-op, and served for 15 years as a member of the Board, and three as vice-chairman. Bruce has also served as a member of the Claremontville Nordic Ski Club, Rotary Club of Claremontville, Claremontville Lions Club, a member of the Building Committee for the United Church in Claremontville, and served on the Board of Trustees, and a member of the United Church Men's Service Club. In addition to Bruce's incredible record of service to our community, he is also the recipient of numerous awards, including the Firefighter's Long Service Award for 30 years' service from the Government of Newfoundland and Labrador, the Fire Service Exemplary Service Medal for 30 years' service from the Government of Canada, and the Commemorative Medal for 125th Anniversary of Canadian Confederation. I have had the great pleasure of working with Bruce over the years on various projects and committees, and specifically on the Canada 150 Faces of Claremontville Committee. I have to add that his depth of knowledge and his passion for this community is truly inspiring. Bruce is always a pleasure to work with, and there are very few people out there that have such strong leadership skills and such a generous spirit. Our next recipient is Charlie Brett. Charlie Brett moved to Claremontville in the early 1960s as a social worker, and very quickly became involved in the community. In 1964, he was the driving force for the formation of the Claremontville Lions Club, and became one of their 17 charter members, and the first president of that Lions Club. In 1972, he entered provincial politics, and was elected to the House of Assembly as a member for Trinity North. He was elected to that position six times in his political career, spanning from 1972 to 1989. During that time, he held cabinet positions in social services, environment and lands, and transportation and communications. In the latter position, he was the leading proponent of seatbelt legislation for our province. As an influential cabinet minister, Charlie was able to accomplish much for Claremontville, including a vast expansion to the town's water and sewer system, the procurement of funds for the development of recreation facilities such as the ball fields and the erection of lights on that facility, and expansion of our fire hall and town library. However, his greatest achievement was the acquisition of a new hospital in Claremontville, the Dr. G.B. Cross Memorial Hospital that opened in 1985. In subsequent years, he was able to add greatly to the development of Claremontville. Trinity North, and in particular Claremontville, have been well-served by Charlie Brett. Being part of this committee has been incredibly rewarding, and I've had an opportunity to meet some of the incredible leaders that have really contributed to our community. And thus far, for the most part, you see many people that are very generous of themselves in giving in our community today. The next three recipients are actually no longer with us. Their stories are just so inspiring, and they are true pioneers of our community. And while we are not able to thank them directly, we do hope that through this recognition, more people in our community will be aware of their great accomplishments and their incredible contributions to our community, helping to strengthen their legacy. The next recipient is Geneva Shalock. Although she referred to herself as an amateur historian, nobody captured the history of Claremontville better than Geneva Shalock. In fact, her writings and photography often earned her the title of unofficial historian of our town. Having taken up photography at the age of 11, and always developing her film in a homemade darkroom, Geneva's wide selection of photographs have been used over the years in many magazines and publications celebrating Claremontville's history. Photography was not Geneva's only artistic endeavor. In addition to being a freelance photographer for the Telegram newspaper, The Atlantic Guardian magazine, she also wrote numerous articles and stories for these publications. She was, in fact, working on a novel at the time of her passing, well into her 90s. Geneva also studied painting, traveled to Mexico and British Columbia to study and perfect her technique. At the age of 62, she became a recognized artist, selling paintings province-wide, including to the provincial government. Being musically talented, Geneva and her brothers formed a country music band in which she played the bass fiddle. They performed at many concerts to raise funds for community projects, one of which was the building of the Claremontville Stadium. She helped start a glee club at Claremontville High School, and accompanied the group on piano. She was also an organist at the United Church in Claremontville for many years. Geneva and her husband Peter were involved in many and varied business ventures in Claremontville. These included the establishment and operation of a restaurant, The Royal Grill, a variety and shoe store, Shalock's Variety Store, a photography business, a beauty salon, a music store, and the very first local newspaper, The Random Guardian. No matter how busy Geneva Shalock was tending to her many pursuits, she was always eager to share her wealth of information and materials, and to speak to youth groups and others about her life in Claremontville. Geneva passed away in 2015 at the age of 97. I'd like to invite the family of Geneva Shalock to come forward and receive her award.[640.11][640.11](Applause) The next recipient is Blackie Drover. Blackie Drover was a woman ahead of her time, innovative, independent, and assertive, but in pre-Confederate Newfoundland, there was no place for a woman like Blackie Drover. Born Dorothy Mary Rowe on Fauve Island in 1920, she spent eight years of her childhood there before moving to St. John's, where she completed her schooling. In 1952, Blackie and her husband Harry Drover moved to Claremontville, where they bought and renovated the Ballmero Lodge, at the time, the town's most modern hotel. She is perhaps remembered best for her controversial involvement in the political arena, first as councillor, and then as Claremontville's mayor. She was the first woman in Newfoundland to hold either of these positions. In 1957, running a municipality was a man's game. Women in politics was unheard of. Blackie was the only woman among 10 candidates nominated, and she headed the polls with 176 votes. Harry was also elected, making Claremontville Town Council the first in the province to have a husband-wife team. At that time, the Local Government Act in Newfoundland stated that after a municipal election, a deputy mayor and mayor are appointed by councillors at the subsequent meeting. It was customary to elect the mayor as mayor the person who heads the poll, but on November 22, 1957, that custom was broken when former mayor Boy Smith, who received 144 votes to Blackie's 176, was appointed mayor. Although Blackie was satisfied with this, the citizens who voted for her were not. A petition was organized to protest the non-election of Blackie Drover to the posts of mayor. As a result of the controversy, Smith and five other councillors resigned. Deputy Mayor Harry Drover took over the three-member council, and vacated his seat, appointing his wife mayor. Shortly thereafter, Municipal Affairs abolished the Claremontville Town Council, stating that five members were needed to comprise a working quorum. Consequently, an appointed council was asked to serve until a general election. Blackie and Harry Drover were not appointed to that council, and Blackie did not run in the next election. Even though her involvement in politics was short-lived, her impact was felt across the country. Blackie made Canada aware that Claremontville existed. National press coverage was given to Mrs. Drover and the election fiasco, and she was named Woman of the Year in 1958. In her final year, she lived in Claremontville with one of her six children, where she may have mellowed a bit with the passing of time, but she still stood up for her beliefs. Blackie Drover Burton died in 2008, and to date, Claremontville has not had a second female mayor. I'd like to invite someone from the family of Blackie Drover to come forward and accept The final recipient this evening is Edgar Stanley. As a young man in his early twenties, he made the decision to leave a secure job as engineer with the Raid Newfoundland Company, and venture into the challenging world of business. Over the next number of years, he successfully established a general retail store, hotel and restaurant, schooner service delivering supplies, and fish, sawmill, auto dealership, and hardware building supplies and furniture stores. While all of these ventures were certainly laudable in themselves, perhaps his greatest accomplishment and service to our community was the provision of electricity to the area. In 1933, during the Depression years, Edgar took unprecedented leap of faith to build a power station and established the Claremontville Light and Power Company, which he operated until 1952. Electricity started flowing to a dozen houses in Claremontville at that time, and was eventually extended to Shoal Harbor, Milton, and Georges Brook. On display today at the Newfoundland Light and Power Regional Office in Claremontville is a second generator that he installed in his power plant in the 1930s. Edgar Stanley was also a civic leader in the community. In the early 1930s, he and a small number of individuals provided materials and labor to build the North School, and raised funds to hire a teacher. He was a member of the local school board for several years. In 1951, Edgar served as councillor when he was elected to the first Claremontville Town Council, which is also a recipient of the Canada 150 Faces of Claremontville Award. Edgar Stanley was a notable pioneer, an entrepreneur, and a community leader in Claremontville through his adult life. He has contributed significantly to building our community. I'd like to invite someone from Edgar Stanley's family to come forward and accept on his It's just incredible to see we have the son, son-in-law, great-grandsons, grandsons, and great-grandsons here today, and granddaughter. Anyway, it's absolutely incredible to be part of this, and it's been quite an honor.[1073.48][1073.48](Applause) And that concludes our presentations for this evening. We have a number of other Faces of Claremontville Awards, so you'll be seeing lots of us between now and the end of December. Best wishes to our new councillors, and thank you for all that you do for our community.[1093.01][1093.01](Applause)
Thank you, Nancy, and congratulations to all tonight's recipients, who certainly contributed greatly to our community over the years, and certainly some of them have certainly been pioneers in helping build our community. Well, it's hard to believe that four years have passed since we last stood on the stage swearing-in a new council. When I look back, it's been a busy four years. The past four years have been a period of change at the Town Hall. Some of our long-term staff members have retired after serving many years of working for Claremontville citizens. I certainly wish all of them well in their retirement, and I welcome any of the new faces to our staff. Speaking of change, in 2013, we had our first change in the mayor's chair since 1981, when Mayor Best retired and Mayor Russell was named mayor. I congratulate Mayor Russell on his first term as mayor, and wish him well on his second term in office. There's been a focused effort on infrastructure improvement during the last four years. Over $10 million has been invested into infrastructure improvements, and also, the longstanding issue of the shopping center parking lot was finally addressed. While much work has been done to address our aging infrastructure, the to-do list is still fairly complete. The new council will need to work closely with our provincial and federal government representatives to continue to find ways to fund the many necessary infrastructure Claremontville hasn't been immune to the drop in our provincial and federal economies. New residential growth has slowed significantly over the past few years. With that being said, council has been able to maintain fair tax rates for our citizens while still providing the services required. While the residential market may have slowed, we are seeing some significant investment by our business community. A good example is the new business developments in the Shoal Harbor and Thompson Street area. Traffic has increased in this area to the point that new traffic lights will be installed in the coming weeks to handle increased business traffic. These kinds of investments bode well for our long-term stability, as do major service centers for this area. And council looks forward to working with our business community to further grow our business sector. Claremontville's been in the national and provincial spotlight over the past few years, starting with the very successful 2014 Newfoundland and Labrador Winter Games. I may be biased, but I think we set a high bar for future winter games to live up to, thanks in part to the many volunteers and community support who made the event such a success. In 2015, for the first time since 1984, the Allen Cup Senior Hockey Championships were hosted in Claremontville. We're hosting Newfoundland's Oi right here in Claremontville. While our Caribou's came up a little short of their goal of another championship, they represented Claremontville with pride, and we got a chance to see some of the best hockey that we've probably ever seen at the event center. Council was pleased to partner with Habitat for Humanity to have our first Habitat build here in Claremontville in 2014. Two deserving families received an affordable home, thanks to the community's support and the community's volunteers again. Council also joined forces with the New Life Church recently in announcing a new affordable housing development, which is currently under construction on Moore's Road. These types of social projects are something we can all take pride in. Having a safe and affordable home is something all our citizens deserve, regardless of the income level. In 2018, we will see the completion of the Elizabeth Swan redevelopment, which started with the new build of Davis Chalet in 2014. I look forward to seeing the faces of our kids, and even the young at heart, when the new splash pad is completed. Having Claremontville has tremendous potential, and will be a growth center for many years to come. I would like to thank the outgoing council for all the work you have done. Unless you have served on council, sometimes hired to appreciate the amount of time and effort councillors and staff put into helping lead a community such as Claremontville. So I certainly thank them for all the hours and time they've put in, and welcome best under welcome. And thank them for their contribution, and welcome. My God, I can't say it. Blah, blah, excuse me. Thank them for their contribution, and wish them well in future. There we go. To the new council, I welcome you as you take the oath of office tonight, and I look forward to working with you over the next four years, as we lead and grow this town we call home. Next, I would like to welcome Mr. Holloway, MHA for Terranova, to bring greetings on behalf of the provincial government of Newfoundland and Labrador.[1430.01][1430.01](Applause)
Well, good evening. Certainly thanks for the opportunity to join you here tonight for swearing-in ceremony. First, I'd like to acknowledge the recipients of the 150 Faces of Claremontville. Having grown up in Port Land, was certainly attending high school here in Port Land for the names that you referenced tonight, are certainly names that I would have known, having gone through the school system here. And, you know, I've seen tremendous change in this community over the last 50, almost one years. Birthday coming up, so people will pay, stay tuned to Facebook, I guess. If yesterday's any indication, with the eighth wedding anniversary and lots of messages from everybody, then maybe there'll be a few more with my birthday coming up. Congratulations to Mayor Russell and the new town council. I'd also like to acknowledge members of the previous council, and in particular, those that did not choose to seek reelection. Ashley Avery, Jill Monk, and of course, Dave Harris, now who's the town's new chief administrative officer. I have worked closely with each of these individuals over the last two years, since coming into public life myself. I've enjoyed our work, and I wish to thank each of you for giving so generously to this community, with your time away from your families. I'd like to thank you for your leadership and your commitment to promote Claremontville as a great place to live and to work. In my opinion, you have made a difference. To Mayor Russell and the other members of the previous council, who are now also part of the new council, I have found that we have had a great working relationship over the past two years. And Dave touched on some of these things when he spoke. I've witnessed the town continuing its growth and its prosperity. Initiatives like Elizabeth Swan Park and its revitalization plan, and the creation of the farm and market at Claremontlea. And I'm a bit biased on that one, and I certainly think that that is becoming a true gem for this community, and certainly a strong economic driver. Recently, I was part of an event where we announced $3.6 million in multi-year municipal capital funding for water and sewer enhancements, road work, and a new salt storage shed for this community. The new Christian Life Church Affordable Housing Project that Dave referenced, and many of you would know that prior to coming into public life, I had a strong background in affordable housing, was very much a part of the Habitat for Humanity duplex build, and I continue. Even as an MHA, there are things that I have specific interest in, and I'm constantly talking to Dave, and I will be talking to the new town council, about how we can do more affordable housing in this community. And certainly as the MHA, I will do my part to make sure that that happens. To the new council, being a municipal councillor takes drive, it takes commitment, it requires leadership, it requires the ability to partner and to collaborate. I wish to thank your families in advance for all the hours that you will give to this community. I know firsthand the amount of time that I'm away from my family, and I suspect in the municipal politics, it is no different. So I'm thinking about the next four years. I commit to you that I will do whatever I can to help the town of Claremontville continue in its prosperity. A community can thrive when all three levels of government cooperate and collaborate. And I think we've seen that certainly over the last couple of years since I've been in office with the previous council, and I challenge the new council to continue on with that great relationship. Some of you may have been following that one of the things we're doing as a government is exploring regional government. And I think communities like Claremontville, and the great leadership of a town council could contribute to that kind of thinking of shared services, especially for communities that rely on Claremontville or are adjacent to Claremontville. And I certainly would encourage you to continue that dialogue as a new council. So on behalf of Minister Joyce, and my colleagues in the provincial government, I say congratulations. I wish you well. Minister Joyce has expressed personally that the door within the department I'm also part of, which is Municipal Affairs and Environment, our door is always open. If you have an issue, please call. If there's something that you would like my input or my support, then I'm always available. So Mayor Russell, congratulations, council. I look forward to your swearing-in. Thanks again for the opportunity to join you.[1786.36][1786.36](Applause)
Thank you, Colin. I thank you for your support, and I must say, from being on a previous council, Colin has been a true ally and has certainly supported any of the initiatives that we have put forward to government, so I thank you for that. I look forward to our continued cooperation as we, as we work with the provincial government to improve our town moving forward. So next, I would like to introduce each councillor in alphabetical order. After finishing reading your biography, I would ask that you come up to the stage and take the oath of office, right here at the mic, and have a seat over here. First off, we have Bill Bailey. Bill was born and raised in Shoal Harbour and has lived in the town of Claremont for more than 60 years. He is married to Gina Bailey and has one daughter, Michelle. Bill attended high school at Horwood High and vocational school at Kona here in Claremont. He is a certified Level 4 Claim Adjuster and has 45 years of experience in that field, including extensive contract adjusting with fire emergency services in Newfoundland, as well as outside the province, completing national disaster claims. He has owned and operated an adjusting business in Claremont for over 25 years. Bill is an extremely active member of the community, both personally and professionally. He is a retired member of the Claremont Fire Department, a previous Vista School Board trustee, a previous member of Claremont Rotary Club, and a certified minor hockey coach. Currently, Bill is the grooming and trails director of the Claremont Nordic Ski Club and a member of the White Hills Ski Resort. He is also an avid long-distance walker, skier, and hiker. And if anybody knows Bill, if you want to find Bill wintertime, just go up and he's into groomer, more than likely. As a councillor, Bill sits on several committees. This includes Public Works, Recreation and Arts, and Beautification Committees. He is also the infamous member of the Eastern Regional Service Board and a chairperson of Arts Under the Stars Programme. This will be Bill's fourth term as councillor for the town of Claremont. He is very eager to get started working with the newly formed council. So Bill, please come on.
I, Bill Bailey, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont to which I have been elected slash appointed. I disappoint in this case. I have not knowingly contravened Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or personal or private interests to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal or direct or indirect monetary interest that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement and I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the Act. So help me God.
Next, we have Rod Nichol. Rod Nichol and his wife Joan came to Claremont in September of 1974 and raised two children, Stephanie and Stephen. Rod graduated from Memorial University of Newfoundland in 1974 with a Bachelor of Physical Education and a Bachelor of Education, and then went on to complete a Master of Physical Education in 1995. For 18 years, he was a physical education and health coordinator, and in 2004, completed 30 years as the physical education teacher at Claremont Middle School. He has committed numerous volunteer hours in a variety of community organizations, including Kinsman, CARA, Random Age Friendly Committee, and volunteers as a driver and a creche bus service. He has been a volunteer coach in a variety of youth sporting opportunities and earned his Level 1 and 2 Coaching Instructor's Designation as part of the National Coaching Certification Programme. He has served on numerous local, provincial, and national committees, and recently finished a successful four-year term as president of Sport Newfoundland and Labrador. He has been instrumental in chairing two provincial games steering committees in preparing successful bids for the 1994 and 2014 Newfoundland and Labrador Provincial Winter Games here in Claremont. In 2005, he formed a tri-pin jumpstart chapter here in Claremont, supporting sporting programs for economically disadvantaged youth and continues to chair this initiative today. Rod also continues to serve his community as a member of the Alpine Development Alliance Corporation in support of the successful operation and promotion of the White Hills Ski Resort. In 1998, he received the Canadian Association of Health Physical Education, Recreation, and Dance National Youth Professional Award. And the Claremont Citizen of the Year Award. He was also an honoured recipient in 1992 for the commemorative medal for Canada's 125th anniversary, and in 2002, received the Golden Jubilee Award from the Government of Canada in recognition of his volunteerism. Rod is an advocate of physical activity, continues to participate in curling, golf, basketball, alpine, and Nordic skiing, snowshoeing, hiking, tennis, and skating activities. I'm not sure what else he has time to do, but he's very active, which is certainly good. Rod has also served on three previous councils in Claremont, and for the next four years, he plans to work hard on behalf of the citizens of Claremont and continue to enhance their quality of life. Rod Nichol.
I don't really need them, by the way, but they are here. If I get them. What are you looking right now? Let's try that. I, Rod Nichol, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont to which I have been elected and appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interests to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interests that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in the discussions or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement, and I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the Act. So, that's all I need to, where the oath is taken, so help me God, I've just added that.
Next, we have Lloyd Parrott. Lloyd was raised in Wauwaw, Labrador, and immediately upon completion of high school, became a member of the Canadian Armed Forces. It was there that he had a successful career that spanned 21 years as a recruiting officer with the 2nd Battalion of the Royal Canadian Regiment and 103 Search and Rescue Squadron. Upon his retirement in 2011, Lloyd and his family moved to Claremont. Over the years, he has completed a wide array of training and formal courses that were instrumental in his professional development, including maintenance management, network administration, computer technology, resource management, leadership training, operational and environment training, and recruiting officer training courses. Lloyd is currently the general manager for three successful companies, PTL Services, Blackhawk Industrial Services, and CSL Services. In his role as the general manager, Lloyd oversees the day-to-day operations, business management, human resource management, and maintains labour relations. Lloyd is also the manager of operations and business development for Talon Energy Services. Lloyd currently sits on the board of directors for White Hills as vice-chair. He is a member of the executive council on the board of directors for the Construction Labour Relations Association of Newfoundland, and he is on the board of directors for the Hebron Project. He is deeply involved in labour relations throughout the province and sits as a professional management trustee for health, welfare, and pensions for the Teamsters Union. Lloyd takes an active role in fundraising for charities throughout the province, and most notably, he is proud of his affiliation with Power to Hope, which continues to do ongoing work on many levels. Lloyd and Nicole have been married 17 years and have two children, Olivia 11 and Gavin 9. Lloyd is very eager to begin his new role and looks forward to working with the new town council on behalf of the citizens of Claremont. I personally like to thank Lloyd for his, in particular, his 21 years of service with the Canadian military, and I think we should give him a round of applause for that.
I, Lloyd Parrott, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont to which I have been elected or appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the municipality's Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interests to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal, direct, indirect, or monetary interest that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement and I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the Act. So help me God.
Next, we have John Pickett. John is a native of Buren, Pennsylvania, and graduated from Marystown Central High School in June 1969. From there, he attended Memorial University in St. John's and graduated with a Bachelor of Arts degree with a major in social work in December 1973. In January of 1974, John went to work with the Department of Social Services as a social worker at a station in Beavert. In September 1980, John was transferred to Claremont and has made Claremont his home ever since. John continued to be employed as a social worker with the provincial government until April 1998, when with government restructuring, he became an employee of the Eastern Regional Health Authority. John was in a management position at Eastern Health until his retirement in March 2017, after 43 years of public service. Since coming to Claremont in 1980, John has had a long history of providing volunteer services to the town of Claremont. John was involved with many committees and organizations within the town, such as the Claremont Area Recreation Association, Minor Softball, Major Slow Pitch Softball, Claremont Curling Association, Alternate Measures Committee, Claremont Dump, Jump Start Committee, Regional Vista Games, Claremont Regional Extended Senior Transportation, and many more. John is also a member of the organizing committee for the 1994 Newfoundland and Labrador Winter Games hosted by the town of Claremont. In 1987, John was awarded the Leroy Miller Award for his contribution to recreation in this town. John has experience as a town councillor, having served on the town council from 1998 to 2005, and from 2009 to 2013. Just recently, John received an award as one of the 150 faces of Claremont. John is married to his wife Holly and has two children, Lori and Michael. John Pickett.
I, John Pickett, do solemnly swear and affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont to which I have been elected or appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interests to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interest that I have in a matter before the council and will not participate in the discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement, and I will, as required by the Municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time established by the Act. So help me God.
I tend to say that we have a trade, but I'm placed, I'm talking, I guess. Next, we have Heber Smith. Heber has been a lifelong resident of Claremont. He is married to Carmel and has two children, Leah and Andrew. He will be starting his fifth term on council and was previously employed at Service Canada as a business expertise advisor for more than 34 years. He has served on the Finance Committee of Council for 16 years, the Public Works Committee and Planning Committee for four years, and the Human Resources Committee for four years. Heber was a member of the 1994 Newfoundland and Labrador Winter Games Host Committee, member of the 1997 Canadian Midget Boys National Softball Championships Host Committee, president of Golf Newfoundland and Labrador 2002, a Newfoundland mission staff member for the 2007 Canada Winter Games, Chair of Registration and Results for 2014 Newfoundland and Labrador Winter Games, and a member of the 2015 Allen Cup Host Committee. He is currently the Eastern representative for Golf Newfoundland and Labrador Hall of Fame Committee. His hobbies include hunting, hockey, and golf, and I guess opposite of Bill, if you're looking for Heber summertime, he's usually on the golf course. Heber?
I, Heber Smith, do solemnly swear or affirm that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont to which I have been elected or appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the Municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interests to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose my personal direct or indirect monetary interests that I have in a matter before council and will not participate in discussion or vote on any such matter. before council and will not participate in discussion or vote on any such matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement, and I will, as required by the municipality's Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period established by the Act. So help me God.
Thank you, councillor Smith. Next, we have Paul Tilly. Paul is a post-secondary educator in Claremont, where he has been with the College of North Atlantic for two and a half decades. A lifelong interest in politics, particularly municipal politics, coupled with the encouragement and support of a great community and some great community leaders, were instrumental to Paul standing for a third term on Claremont's council. For Paul, it is truly a privileged opportunity. Paul's been an active participant in Claremont's growth through his involvement in council-led projects, helping to improve community communications with his Our Town Claremont page, being a community correspondent for CTV, providing opportunities for students, and serving on numerous community boards and committees, including the 2014 Newfoundland-Labrador Winter Games and Habitat Claremont. Paul, supported by his wife, continues to work towards making Claremont a place to want to live, work, and play. Paul holds a master's degree in business administration, a bachelor of arts degree in political science. Paul and his wife Evelyn are outdoor enthusiasts, enjoying all our region has to offer. Their two children, Hannah and Harrison, are attending post-secondary school in St. John's, and anyone who knows Paul, I guess you could say he's the official, unofficial photographer for the town of Claremont, because he's at every event providing photography services for council. Please welcome Paul Tilly.
It is really fun print. I, Paul Tilly, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of councillor for the municipality of Claremont, to which I have been acclaimed appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the municipal Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal, direct, or indirect monetary interests that I have in a matter before council and will certainly not participate in the discussion or vote on such a matter. I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement, and I will, as required by the municipal Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time period that established by the Act. So help me God.
Thank you, councillor Tilly. Next, we have Fraser Russell. Fraser was born in Winterbrook, Bonveste Bay, and moved to Claremont as a teenager in 1962. After graduating from Horwood High School, he attended Moore University, where he received a Bachelor of Science and a Master of Education degree in 1972. He also studied at the University of Ottawa and the University of Quebec. After a 30-year career in education, Fraser became an entrepreneur and established several small businesses in Claremont, which he continues to operate today. Fraser began his long involvement with the town of Claremont at an early age, when he became president of the Claremont Youth Club in 1966. It was in that position that he lobbied for tennis courts that became a reality in 1967 as a Canada Centennial Legacy Project. For 50 years, he has been involved in making Claremont a better town. This includes leadership and coaching positions in hockey, softball, tennis, and basketball. Under his leadership, the Canadian Midget Boys Softball Championships were held in Claremont in 1997 and the National Allen Cup Senior Hockey Championships in 2015. Fraser also chaired the 1994 Newfoundland-Labrador Winter Games hosted in Claremont. Some of his involvements include being a member of the GB Cross Memorial Hospital Foundation, chair of the Dr. GB Course Memorial Hospital Board, and chair of the Canadian Actuary Claremont Events Centre Building Committee. He was also chair of the Claremont Caribou's Hockey Club, chair of the Eastern Initiatives CBDC, and vestry member at St. Mary's Anglican Church. His service to the town of Claremont has been recognized by the Rotary Club, Paul Harris Fellow, the Melvin Jones Lions Club Fellow, the Leroy Miller Sports Builder Award, Hockey Newfoundland-Labrador Senior Hockey Award, and a Claremont Citizen of the Year Award. Fraser has also served on council for 16 years to pass four years as mayor. Fraser and his wife Sherry have three children, two grandchildren. Please welcome Mayor Russell.
I, Fraser Russell, do solemnly swear that I am fully qualified to hold the office of mayor for the municipality of Claremont, to which I have been elected backslash appointed. I have not knowingly contravened the municipality's Elections Act respecting any matter in relation to my election or appointment. I will faithfully, to the best of my ability, perform the duties and responsibilities of my office and will not allow any direct or indirect monetary or any other personal or private interest to influence my conduct or affect my public duties. I will disclose any personal, direct, or, I'm sorry, I will, if required by law, file an annual conflict of interest disclosure statement, and I will, as required by the municipality's Elections Act, file a campaign contributions disclosure statement within the required time established by the Act. So help me God.
Thank you, Mayor Russell. So, please welcome our new council for 2017-2021. The only thing I can say, and I'm not lacking experience, I think I ended up the other day, in a 70-plus years of council experience sitting at the table here, so they're not new to the council world, so we're, I think we're in good hands. Do you like to, you got a picture? Got it done? Okay, perfect, thank you. Next, I'd like to welcome Mayor Russell to bring some greetings.
Thank you, David, MHA, Colin Holloway, council members, invited guests, staff members, family and friends, residents. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us this evening as we usher in a new term of council for the town of Claremont. Tonight's swearing-in ceremony is a longstanding tradition and a very important one in municipal government. It often signifies new beginnings. Speaking of beginnings, municipal government began in Claremont with the swearing-in of the first council on July the 10th, 1951. The first budget was $11,896. This year, the budget is $11 million. The town clerk was paid $50 a month. You're getting a little more. The annual service fee for the town was $5. The first order of business was how to obtain land from people in order to be able to widen the roads. Council also had to establish rules for septic tanks and mandated the schools to please remove the outdoor toilets. How to get the cows and the horses off the roads was another big problem they had to address, and today I often wonder what has changed, because today we are dealing with ducks and hens. I just want to say, the opportunity and the privilege to serve you as mayor for another four years is exciting, and I thank you for your trust and for your confidence. You can count on all of my energy and my commitment to advance the town of Claremont. With the collective vision and the commitment of my new council, we will achieve all of our goals and meet the challenges that are facing our town. I want to take a moment to recognize two outgoing councillors who have served our town very well for the past four years: Deputy Mayor Ashton Avery and councillor Joe Monk. Both of them have made a positive difference in the life of Claremont and given us a tremendous gift, their time, their dedication, and certainly the very best of themselves. We owe them a great deal of gratitude, and I would like for you to join me in thanking them for their contribution. I also want to thank David Harris for his three years as a councillor with us. Obviously, he is now our new CAO and serves us in a new capacity and is doing very well in that, and we're very grateful to have him on board with us. I also want to welcome our three returning councillors, councillors Bailey, Smith, and Tilly. I also welcome to council councillors Pickett and Nicholl, who have both served with us before, as well as our only new councillor, councillor Lloyd Parrott. I thank all of you for your willingness to get involved or to remain involved in helping Claremont realize its full potential. I look forward to working with each one of you during this term of council. Most of all, I look forward to what we can accomplish together, as none of us acting alone can achieve success. Your new council will face many challenges ahead. With the knowledge that we don't do this work by ourselves, we will be ably assisted by an excellent senior management, two of which are on stage here with me this evening, Angela and David. Our managers, our council workers, and of course, our many volunteers that make Claremont work so well, to them I say thank you in advance for your work and what will happen in the next four years. The town of Claremont does not operate in isolation. There are two other levels of government that we need to continue to work with in addressing our challenges and our opportunities, the provincial and federal governments. We are fortunate in Claremont to have a spirit of cooperation and collaboration with the province because of our efforts of our MHA, Colin Holloway, who has constantly advocated for Claremont. Colin, we look forward to working with you in the next four years as well and retaining that positive relationship. As well, as soon as our new MP is determined, we will renew our federal relationship and explore federal funding opportunities to carry out much-needed work. The mandate of your new council is clear: to manage our town's growth and to deliver cost-effective services to our citizens. In so doing, we will continue to make Claremont a prosperous rural town, having a balance of affordable and senior housing, quality medical care, good schools, residents with active, healthy lifestyles, extensive recreational facilities, a green and clean environment, a safe and inclusive society, ample employment, and opportunities for everyone to achieve their personal goals. In concluding, thank you, residents of Claremont, for your trust and your confidence in us. You have a new council that embodies your hopes and your dreams for this town that we love so much. With your support and with your guidance, the only direction for Claremont over the next four years is onward and upward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Russell. The first council meeting will be October 10th, at which time we will be selecting the committee memberships and the council committee structures, so we look forward to more announcements on that matter on October 10th. Next, I'd like to please again welcome Jolene Felton, as she performs the Old Newfoundland.
When sun rays crown the pine-clad hills and summer spread her heads, when silver and voices to nigh rails, we love thee, smiling land. We love thee, we love thee, we love thee, smiling land. As loved our fathers, so we love, where once they stood we stand. Their prayers we raise to heaven above, God guard thee, new found land. God guard thee, God guard thee, God guard thee, new found land.
Thank you, Jolene. Wonderful job again, as usual. So that concludes our ceremony for this evening. I'd like to thank you for coming out. A meeting greet session will follow in a theatre lobby just outside here. Please join us for some refreshments, and please feel free to stay and meet your new council. Thank you again, and have a wonderful evening.